Tuesday, June 4th, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. Could I have a real call, please?
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Torgerson?
Here.
Chairman Kane?
Here.
Commissioners Jarrow and Commissioner Manukian are absent.
A report regarding posting of agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on or before Wednesday, May 28th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Great. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Approval of minutes from May 21st. Do we, yeah, I guess we have enough people here to be able to vote on it. Any comments or corrections from either of you gentlemen? I have a couple.
Do you have a couple?
Yes. Did you have some, Richard?
Uh, no, I was gonna move the...
Oh, um, on page five, um, the paragraph that begins Chairman Kane commented, uh, the last sentence said that I suggested that be made, the wall be made of stucco, that should be clad in stucco, and I also would like to conclude a statement where the appellant agreed to keep the sign down while they worked on the rest of the process. Other than that, I had no corrections or comments, so could we have a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes of the May 21st, 2008 meeting as presented and corrected. Can I second that?
Motion support call roll, please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Torgerson?
Yes.
Chairman Kane?
Aye, on a vote of three to oh, the approval of minutes was granted from May 21st, 2008. Agenda item five, oral communications, I have no cards, I believe. So we'll move on to agenda item six, which is an appeal. First, let me give a reading of the procedures for appeals. Appeal hearings will be conducted in the following manner. The title of the matter before the commission will be announced by the chairperson or staff. Staff will give a brief overview of the application and decision. The appellant or his representative will submit facts or statements relative to the appeal within a 15-minute time limit. Where the appellant is not the applicant, the applicant or his/her authorized representative will submit facts or statements within a 15-minute time limit. The chairperson may request the zoning administrator or zoning hearing officer to provide his or her rationale for the decision or ask other questions. Other individuals, if any, can speak within a three to five-minute time limit, which would be at the discretion of the chairperson. The applicant, if not the appellant, may present a rebuttal within a five-minute time limit, or I can designate that time limit. Rebuttals shall be limited to addressing only issues discussed earlier in the public hearing. After testimony from all speakers, the chairperson will close the public hearing. No further testimony will be taken unless specific questions are directed by commissioners or unless the commission opens the public hearing. After deliberating, the commission will take one of four actions. Find in favor the appellant, find in favor the zoning administrator, make no decision or remand the matter to the zoning administrator, or continue the matter. Any individual not satisfied with the commission's decision may file an appeal to the city council. This is done by filing a notice of appeal along with a filing fee at the Building and Safety Section Permit Services Center located on the first floor of the Municipal Services Building, and appeal must be filed within 15 days. Okay, so, agenda item six A, it's a conditional use permit case number PCUP 2007-034. The location is 6410 San Fernando Road. It's an appeal, the appeal requests modification of a conditional use permit, a CUP, for the selling and serving of alcoholic beverages at a full-service restaurant to reflect conditions of approval that clearly limit the range of activities allowed to those permitted under the previous CUP, and confirm that banquet activities are allowed only to the extent permitted under the current definition of restaurant full service. Specifically, the restaurant shall have less than 30 percent of the serving area available for private party rental where access by the general public is restricted. Appellant is James Starbird, the city manager. Staff is represented by Hassan Hagane, Director of Planning, and the recommendation is that we approve the conditional use permit application with changes to the conditions from the zoning administrator's decision dated February 28th, 2008. Now, that said, we only have three board members this evening, so what that means is we will have to vote, uh, at least three of us would have to vote in favor of the change, otherwise the zoning administrator's decision will remain as is. Um, I frequently will give an appellant the opportunity to continue the case, recognizing that, that severe burden, and I would like to hear from the appellant if they want to proceed or if they would like this to be continued.
Mr. Chair, Jim Starbird, City Manager, I'm comfortable proceeding.
Very good, thank you, sir. Do we have a staff overview, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, this is the appeal, as you mentioned, of conditional use permit case number PCUP 2007-034, a conditional use permit to sell and serve alcoholic beverages in an existing business at 6410 San Fernando Road. I am presenting the case as the case planner. My name is Hassan Hagane, I'm the Director of Planning. This is not really an appeal of the zoning administrator's findings. This appeal is meant to clarify the wording of some of the conditions imposed by the permit issued by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator is here to answer any questions you might have later on. The appellant requests modification of the conditional use permit to reflect the uses that were in place at the time the application was filed, noticed, and heard. Essentially, the premise for the appeal is that the wording of two specific conditions issued by the zoning administrator may be interpreted as an intensification of the use of the property beyond the scope of the application submitted by the applicant and the noticing and without analysis of the potential impacts of such an intensification of use. Staff has analyzed the appeal and concurs that the wording of the zoning administrator's decision on conditions 16 and 17 may result in an intensification of use that was not in the application, nor was it properly noticed and analyzed. The issue in question is the extent to which the existing restaurant may have banquet functions as part of its operation. Banquet hall use is a more intense use than, and requires more parking than a restaurant and is often subject to additional conditions. As a full-service restaurant, the establishment is limited to no more than 30 percent of its serving area available for private parties rental where access by the general public is restricted. To illustrate how staff has come to this conclusion, I would like to highlight certain sections of the staff report and the exhibits. First, if I may, I would like to bring to your attention Exhibit D, which is the copy of the application that was the subject of the public hearing and for which the zoning administrator issued her decision. In Exhibit D, nowhere does the applicant make any reference to banquet hall or private party use, incidental or otherwise. If I may, now I'll go to Exhibit G, I would like to get...
Can you hold on, please? Yeah. I'm actually trying to, there they are, they're at the bottom. I was looking at the top. Thank you.
Did you find Exhibit D?
Yes, and then Exhibit G you're moving on to?
Right.
All right. Very good. Please continue.
Yes. Now, if I may, I'll take your attention to Exhibit G. I'll wait. And this is the notice of public hearing by the zoning administrator. Again, there is no mention of banquet hall use or use of the property for private parties in the notice. If I may continue, now I'd like to take your attention to Exhibit G. This is the permit that the applicant applied to renew. So, before the latest zoning administrator decision was issued, the establishment was operating under this permit. This was a decision letter issued on November 4th, 2004 by Mr. Kraus, who's sitting to my right. He and Mr. Kraus served as the hearing officer at the then conditional use, for the then conditional use permit. He's here to answer your questions about that particular decision if you have any questions later on. On page three of Exhibit H, which is Mr. Kraus's decision, you will see a few conditions that are key to staff's discussion today. The rewarding of two of these conditions may have resulted in the intensification of use on the property. Specifically, condition number 15, which is a standard condition, says that the facility shall not be rented, leased, or otherwise occupied for purposes not specified in this application. In other words, not intended for a full-service restaurant. Condition 16, that the premises shall remain open to the public during business hours as a full-service restaurant. Here, the hearing officer is clarifying that the use is not a banquet hall. Condition 18, further down, clarifies that the premise shall not be utilized as a banquet hall establishment. Then, condition 24 limits the life of the permit to three years until November 30th, 2007. Three years later, this is the permit that the applicant has applied to renew. So we come full circle. This takes us back to Exhibit D, the latest application filed by the applicant, and Exhibit G, the notice for the ZA hearing, neither one of which mentions anything about intensifying the use. Now we go to the zoning administrator's decision letter, which is Exhibit E. To show why the wording in this letter went beyond the scope of the application and the notice, please look at page two of Exhibit E. The first sentence of the bottom paragraph says that the zoning administrator was able to find the four required findings for approval of the conditional use permit renewal, in that the same condition and situation still exists on this establishment and site. In other words, there is no mention of anything beyond the permit that had been in effect during the previous three years. This was to renew that permit. However, if you go to page four of that decision letter, there are three specific conditions that in combination could be interpreted as an intensification of use. First, condition number 15 repeats the wording that was in the previous CUP issued by Mr. Kraus and maintains the clarification that this is for a full-service restaurant only. Then, condition 16 includes the first set of words in question. It says that the premises shall remain open to the public during business hours as a full-service restaurant with incidental private parties. The last few words were added. Since the extent of incidental private parties is not clearly identified, the last words in this condition may cause confusion. Then, condition 17 complicates things a bit further. It says that the premises shall not be utilized solely as a banquet hall establishment. The word "solely" was added to a condition that was in the previous permit, and then the rest of the condition was repeated. Although the zoning administrator has used the wording in the CUP which was issued by Mr. Kraus in 2004, the addition of these few words could be interpreted to mean that the use of the establishment for private parties and as a banquet hall was allowed beyond the levels allowed under the previous permit. Such an intensification of use was not part of the application and was not analyzed in the public hearing. This is why staff is recommending that the planning commission modify the conditions in the CUP to bring it back to the level of intensity that was appropriate under the noticed public hearing, as in the draft-proposed motion. We are recommending that the planning commission modify conditions 16 and 17 to reflect the use that was in place at the time the application was submitted. Add condition number 24, giving a shorter timeframe to the permit to allow staff to observe whether or not the establishment operates in conformance with the permit. Add condition number 25, to further clarify conditions 16 and 17. In other words, define what we mean by a full-service restaurant here. Add conditions 26 to 23 to create an updated record of the latest decision on file as you make that decision today. So, in addition, I wanted to highlight that on Monday, we received a letter from Mr. Taboni, the applicant's representative. We have distributed copies of that letter. I expect the applicant's team will highlight the contents of that letter as part of their presentation to you. We have read the letter and we think it is not relevant to the appeal that is in front of you. Primarily, Mr. Taboni is objecting to the conditions which were imposed in 2004. That permit was in effect for three years before it expired. The applicant never appealed it. This is about an appeal of a new decision in front of you. Staff does not think the legal disagreements of the applicant's representative is relevant to the fact that two of the conditions included in the ZA's decision introduced uses that were not part of the applicant, application, or the public notice. Therefore, we recommend that the planning commission approve conditional use permit case number PCUP 2007-034 with the conditions modified as reflected in the draft-proposed motion. That concludes staff's presentation. We are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the commission for staff at this time?
Not at this time.
Mr. Ramirez?
Clarification on the added conditions up through 31. Some of these conditions pertain to things that they have to correct. Is there a timeframe associated with those conditions? A deadline or...
No, no. We have not actually recommended timeframes. That's something that they can submit as soon as they can possibly do.
Okay. The other question I have, what triggers a revocation of the CUP? What triggers a revocation of the CUP?
What would trigger a revocation hearing is if they were, if during the time that we give them for the new permit, they, we find that they are operating beyond the levels permitted under the conditional use permit, then we gather the evidence and we would then have enough reason to start a, to schedule a hearing to revoke.
So that hasn't happened?
No.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. Ramirez.
Mr. Hagane, um, condition number 24, the authorization for two years? The previous CUP, I think, was three years, if I recall?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a reason that you're backing off on the duration? Is there concerns over, I mean, what's the thought process?
The thought process is that, uh, there has been some concern by staff that the operation may not be actually in full compliance with the, with what we have on record as far as their square footage and as far as the operation, and since then, in fact, the limit of the operation is in question, we think a two-year duration is a good time for us to just maintain and, you know, observe. However, we're not attached to the two-year limit. If the planning commission would like to extend that to three years, we would not have an objection.
Well, I guess, that's all I was curious about this time. Any other questions for staff? All right. Um, as we begin the public hearing portion, just in points of clarification, um, we have four cards from the applicant, and just for clarification, those four cards, it was the architect, the applicant, uh, the attorney, and an owner, and you folks represent your 15-minute, um, presentation. You're all part of one group. You also have a, you know, a rebuttal period that I'll grant at the end, but just so that you know going into it. All right. With that said, let's begin the public hearing. We've heard from staff, so now let's hear from the appellant.
Chairman members of the commission, my name's Jim Starbird. Once again, I'm City Manager, and I will acknowledge that this is a rather unique circumstance. I think in my 10 years here in Glendale, I have before appealed a decision in planning to the city council once, and I don't know when the last time was a city manager has appealed a decision of the zoning administrator to the planning commission, but in my 10 years, this is the first time. Uh, I couldn't improve on the presentation that Mr. Hagane gave you, but it might be useful for me to reflect on how my appeal came to be. As noted in your staff report, I frankly had just read an email from Ms. Jolene Taylor, who I think has submitted a speaker card here today, and in reading that, frankly thought that if indeed what she had described as a change in two of the conditions of the original CUP for this project back in 2004, that indeed the change could be an expansion and could possibly open the door, I'm not saying it would or was intended to, but could possibly open the door to give rise to the kinds of problems that we have faced numerous times in the 10 years that I've been here, with the change of uses from restaurants to banquet halls and the ensuing issues in neighborhoods arise from that. It did strike me that if the conditions from the 2004 CUP had remained the same, then frankly, you probably wouldn't see me standing here today. But indeed, it seemed to me that Ms. Taylor made a point in her description of how those two conditions could possibly change and allow the expansion of the use of the restaurant. With that, I did what city managers do. I turned to the capable staff, both in planning and in legal, and I said, "Does she have a point here?" And their response after looking at it was, indeed, they felt that she did, that indeed it could open the door to a, I'll call it a misinterpretation of the application of the conditions by the restaurant owner and give rise to further problems of the kind we've experienced in other areas in the time that I've been here. With that, I asked, "So how do we, how do we begin to address that issue?" And was told, "Well, the only way you can address it is to essentially file an appeal." We could rely on one of the residents who was here at the hearing, such as Ms. Taylor, who raised the issue, could have allowed her to do it, but it seemed to me that what is right is right, and indeed, if the staff and I felt that there was a correction that needed to be made, then, then we frankly should attempt to address it and not place the burden on a resident to do that. That's how the matter gets before you today. Again, if the original conditions from 2004 had been continued with an extension, because I don't think any city department objected to an extension of the CUP for alcoholic use, if that had been approved and stood with the conditions, original conditions 16 and 18 as they've been written, I wouldn't be standing before you here today. But then I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Any questions for the appellant?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, sir. There will be rebuttal time available to you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now move on to the applicant, who has the opportunity to present their case for up to 15 minutes. I would also mention, if there's other people that are interested in speaking, I suggest they turn in their cards now as opposed to later, because the hearing could close before you have the chance to speak.
Before you know it. Thank you, Chairman. My name's Derek Devaney. I represent the applicant. I wanted to go through a little more of the history than the staff report did, because in fact, this was a purpose-built building built in 1996 to house a restaurant facility. At the time, as the city knows, the city did not distinguish between a full-service restaurant and a banquet facility, and in fact, this business has been a restaurant which has offered incidental private parties throughout its 12-year history. The original CUP was issued in 1996, and that indicated that the business could operate, could not operate solely as a banquet hall, and that was a condition which was livable with my, with my clients at the time, or the operators at the time, my clients are someone different, and operated like that. Apparently, there was some problems the next year that arose about conditions of a revocation. Proceeding was started but was resolved, and the business has continued to have an alcohol permit under a CUP ever since. In 2001, it came up for renewal, and at that time, uh, there was an application both to renew it and to add dancing. There was a full discussion, and one of the conditions that was issued with the renewal was that there should be a minimum of two security guards employed at the premises when they were there as a special function of private party. They should have a written security contract, um, indicating that the facility was not only being used for private parties, at least some of the time, but the city in fact was aware of that. In 2004, the CUP was renewed again, this time additional restrictions were put on it. I don't think, at that time, for some reason, the applicants didn't seem to notice the difference in the wording of the restrictions, but continued to operate as they had always operated, and in fact, up until this time, I'm not aware of a single complaint regarding parking, regarding traffic, regarding noise, regarding anything else that would be relevant to this, um, this proceeding. The current use of the building is that, as has been for the last 12 years, is a full-service restaurant, open generally to the public during all its business hours, and has hosts occasional private parties. What the staff has recommended is a change in the use, or change in the scope of the use, to further restrict it. What they want is not only not, that the facility cannot be used solely or completely as a banquet hall, but they can only offer private events limited to 30 percent of the floor space. That is in fact a change that wasn't in any of the prior CUPs, and is actually a restriction in the use. What the staff report and the applicant, the appellant are trying to do is further restrict the use of a business that has been operating under basically the same conditions and in the same manner for the last 12 years without any complaint from the population, rather than complaint from the, from the community, without complaint from the city, or the fire department, or the police department. I know that you've gotten my letter, and I hope that you've looked at it and read it, so I don't want to repeat what is in fact in it. But we were willing to live, the applicant was willing to live with the conditions placed there by the zoning administrator. We think we could have argued with them, but they were livable, because in fact, the business is operating as a full-service restaurant with incidental private parties, as it has in the past, and they have no intention of changing that level of use. There's simply no reason, no reason I've heard, to further restrict the type of business. It's an attempt to force the business out of business or force it to change its type of, its style of business, which is unwarranted. The last thing I want to mention is, is, we looked at the, what the city actually has done in terms of renewals and CUP permits for the last several years. It seems that whenever a new CUP application is approved, at least the last ones we've seen, have all been approved for five years. All renewals have been seven to 10 years, equally split. For some reason, the city thinks, or the staff thinks, there should be a two-year renewal. It indicates to me there's, there's something else going on, and what the staff wants to do is, is actually shut the business down or restrict it in some way. This business has had a CUP for 12 years, and the only issue on the CUP is the sale of alcohol, not the use of the building, the sale of alcohol incidental to the use of the building. Building's use has not caused a problem, the sale of alcohol has not caused a problem. The applicant has and continues to comply with all rules of the state, the ABC, and everybody else. We are willing to abide by the original restrictions by the zoning administrator, which we found to be quite clear. The building will not be operated solely as a banquet facility, will have incidental private parties, and remain open to the public during its regular business hours. If you don't have any questions, I am done with my presentation.
Questions? Well, you have more people on your team.
That's right, so I don't know if you have any questions for me, particularly if you want to wait to the end.
Before you go to the next speaker, any questions at this moment?
Well, yeah, I just want a clarification of something you said, that there had been no complaints, but earlier you said that the revocation process was started sometime earlier. It seemed to me like that's a conflict. What can you clarify?
I don't know what, what the revocation process was about. All I got from the staff report was there was a, a revocation process was started in 1997, the year after the building opened, uh, for a violation of eight conditions. They were put on probation, and that was resolved, and the CUP continued without having been revoked through its completion date. I don't know what the conditions were that was violated. I don't, my client, I don't believe, was the one operating back in 1997, so I can't really speak to what the problem was. But during my client's operation, which has been the last five or six years, I believe, I'm not aware of any complaints with respect to traffic, with respect to parking, with respect to noise, the kinds of complaints you have of an overuse of a building. The fact is, what we've done is we talked to the people surrounding, and they don't seem to have any problems with the way the building operates, or the parking facility, or the, any of the other types of things that you normally find with an intensification of use. You find too many people using the building, you find too much noise, too many things going on in the parking lot, too much traffic. This, this building's on San Fernando Road, I don't know how, if you could have too much traffic. Its parking is adequate, and it's been more than adequate for its use for the years, and it just isn't, it's an asset to the community in its current business mission, not a detriment in any way.
Okay.
Do you have no questions?
I have a question for you. Define incidental. What do you see as incidental parties?
According to the, what I've heard from the, in other cases, incidentals is two or three a week, less than four, less than half of a week, getting on a private party. I think the way I heard it defined was incidental was three or less. And that's probably, this facility, I don't think even has three private parties a week. I think it has one or two at most. It doesn't have three, and that's what I consider to be incidental.
All right. Thank you. No other questions for you at this time?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of commission. My name is Aram Maladiyajian. I'm the project architect here. I was asked to be here to ask, to answer any questions you have on the project, and also to give you testimony that the drawings you see in front of you. I'm recently, you know, been in the building, it's exactly the way it is. It hasn't been any expansion, any changes on the floor plans, or a parking layout, or landscaping that's been, you know, any different than over here. In fact, I think the plan shows that there's a gap between the three landscaping areas and the landscaping shows in the photo, it's sort of continuous. We have started the project in 1994, that's 14 years ago, and going through the process of design review board, obtaining all necessary zoning and planning approvals, and going through the building permits, and a construction went on from 1995 to 1996, when, since 1996, the, the restaurant has, was in the operation. At that time, it did comply with all the required zoning, planning, and uses code. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for...
I just have a question on parking. I think we, the report, our staff report indicated 30 parking spaces. Uh, how many handicap, are these tandem, or...
Uh, no, there are no tandem parking spaces. As, as it shows on, on the plan, it's exactly the way it is right now, and it did comply with the code at the time. I believe there are two handicap parking spaces. It shows in the plan over there, it's right next to the entry door from the north side, and there's a handicap ramp that we had to construct in order to maintain the accessibility to the building.
And there was no parking exception issued at the time? And there was no parking exception issued at the time?
No.
Okay. Shall I have? Anything? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the property owner. My name is Vahi Alexia Puncian. I'm here today for the, I got this appeal from city manager and the staff. Just Mr. Ramirez mentioned for the parking. I just want to start the parking. We have forty-one parking spaces, Mr. Ramirez, right now, as a plan. You can check it. Somebody checked already, maybe. And meantime, I want to tell you, for the people working over there, we have employees, and then everybody working, and then we keep the, you know, the people work, because today, you know, the job is very hard to find out. We have employees working, and we doing the business, and no complaint, nobody, neighbors and other stuff never complained about the restaurant. This is a twelve-years-and-more restaurant. We're running, that's the restaurant, the manager running the restaurant. I want to say thank you. If you keep the CUP the same condition as the zoning department, just give us the, you know, the permission for run more than, let's say, three years, or four years, or whatever, I'd be glad if you kept that. Thank you so much. If you have any question, I can answer.
Yes, I have a question on parking, valet parking. Where are you valet parked?
We don't have valet parking. It's free parking. Everybody come and park.
That's somebody.
It's free parking, and we have two security guards for handling that stuff, the parking. They're looking there and watching the cars.
So where do they park? You only have?
Over there, in the parking space.
Well, behind the building, but I mean, I'm sure you have more.
In the street, neighbors, all over, where they find the parking space. There no problem. Nobody complained, neighbors, nobody, never complained about the parking.
And what about your menu? This is an open restaurant to the public?
Yes, it's open. You can stop by and check a look. If you have time, stop by, please. We have menu, we have everything.
And?
You want to submit the menu, we can fax to you.
That's all I have right now.
All right.
I have one question. How often, how many private parties per week?
Right now, we have one or two. That's it, no more than. Sometimes three, it's depend.
And what percentage of the restaurant floor space is devoted to these private parties, and is the main public part of the restaurant still open during the private parties?
As a procedure. What's the procedure? That we following the procedure, by percentage. I can't tell you exactly, but it's we following the procedure, the manager following.
Are you testifying that the restaurant remains open even during your quote-unquote "private parties"?
Right now, yes.
Right now? Meaning over the last year, the last three years?
Last year, yes. I mean, the right now, I mean, the 2007, 2008, it's open.
So you maintain it as a restaurant during a private party?
The manager can answer that question, more than than I.
Well, your layout on, Chair, I just want to clarify his use. Your layout of your facility, you have big tables with a bunch of chairs around them? Do you have any booths, or any other?
There are no booths, just the open.
Yeah, just tables, chairs around them?
Just the tables, yes.
That's it?
That's it.
Sounds like a banquet facility.
We're running twelve years, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not at this time?
Thank you.
My name is Levick Weginian. Manager, I'm running the business of Sixty-Four Ten Ambrosia Restaurant in City of Glendale. During the time which I run the business, the Ambrosia Restaurant being restaurant plus, we did, as we had a conditional use permit during the private parties. And during the time, the parking spaces, everything, whatever, we got forty-one parking spaces, the private parties usually start after six o'clock. We do have enough parking spaces back there. Besides our parking space is forty-one, there is a fifty or sixty-three parking spaces back there. We didn't have that kind of problem. I mean, the private parties, whatever the conditional use permit was, a restaurant private parties, we continue doing the same thing, whatever is says in conditional use permit, whatever the policy says. And we didn't have any problem since we do the party for the neighborhoods, from Glendale Police Department, from the neighborhood watch, we didn't have any problems since then we started the business. I mean, if you can, please, I mean, do, give us the same conditional use permit. You can run the business the way we did before. We don't have a problem. You can ask the neighborhood, you can ask the city police. This is the only restaurant, we, ten years, we didn't have any problem. Please, if it's possible, give us that conditional permit, because there is a, a lot of families working there. And plus, right now, is that the business is very slow. As a restaurant, only restaurant without the private parties, we can survive. We should close it down. Before you revoke the license, we should close it down. There is no business for the restaurant. Recession is killing us. Without the parties, without private parties, it should be closed long time ago. Please, if it's possible, give us the permission to do the business. We got a family, too.
How many people does this restaurant seat?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-two.
So you could have private parties with thirty percent of the serving area?
Yes.
And still be classified as a full-service restaurant?
No problem.
Which is what you've been doing?
Yes.
Well, that's what the, okay. Thank you.
And it's year to, over the last few months, what's been the largest banquet that you hosted, or private party that you hosted?
The largest, I can show you the, I mean, the receipt, everything, whatever you got, it's been about hundred-and-twenty people.
Okay. And when you have that hundred-and-twenty people, again, you maintain the restaurant for anybody that comes in off the street?
Yes, we have a separate table for the restaurant.
Okay. Any other questions for the speaker?
Do you have a full bar also in the facility?
No, we don't. We don't have a full bar.
You serve, you serve alcohol?
Yes.
Beer and wine?
Yes, beer and wine.
Yeah. So just serve them on tables?
Right. Anybody ask for it. But believe me, there is too much competition, first of all, and as a restaurant business very slow. We can survive. Try be a restaurant, I'm telling you, I should close it down for a long time. Plus, right now, used to was a party is like hundred-fifty, two-hundred people. City of Glendale since opened up, too many restaurants, too many competitions, last, I can tell you, last eight, ten months, our party's been only hundred-and-twenty people, eighty people. I can show you, I can prove it how many people I had.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other questions? Not. Thank you, sir.
I don't have a question for him, but sometime, I'd like to hear about a police report on, on any events or anything.
Yeah, I had plans of asking staff.
All right, so we can do that later?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, we'll save that for later.
Yeah.
All right. I have two other interested party cards. The first card is Margaret Hammond. Okay, and this is not going to be a long, drawn-out process. If you're going to speak, turn in the card right now. Just that simple. Okay? All right. Very good. Please, Ms. Hammond.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I'm a citizen of Glendale, and I've lived here fifty years. On at least three occasions, I went with a friend to this restaurant, and we tried to enter from San Fernando Road. The doors were locked, we could not get in, so we went around to the rear entrance and tried to go in there, to have, it was about three o'clock in the afternoon, three, four o'clock. And we went in, there was no one to greet us, nobody offered us a menu. When we went in, and a big, open space was there, and we looked inside where the banquet room, or the restaurant was supposed to be, there were about, oh, at least ten tables, maybe more, twelve, set up with ten and twelve people. But there wasn't anywhere, and nobody came to greet us. We tried to talk to someone, and everybody, they were just, everybody was going about setting up the tables and getting ready, apparently for a banquet hall. We tried to go again, later in the evening, we went back another day, and virtually the same thing. There were a lot of cars in the back, and I'm sure at least two-hundred people, if not more, and when you look at forty-one parking spaces, that isn't very much for over two-hundred people. So where do those cars park? They park anywhere they can, and we virtually had the job to even get a spot in the public parking. The other thing that's interesting is the neighbors on each, on the one side, or several of them, had signs up, "No Ambrosia Parking." I mean, that was very, you know, big signs. We noticed that in particular. Again, there was this feeling that there wasn't any restaurant there. I mean, they didn't offer us a menu, didn't offer to let us sit down, there was nobody to greet us. I mean, I don't know any restaurant, I mean, if I go to Conrad's, there's always somebody there to greet me, and say, "Where would you like to sit?", and give me a menu. Now, that, to me, is a full restaurant. So I do not feel that this representation as a restaurant is actually upfront on this. So that's the reason I'm coming forward, because I have gone there and have actually tried to go in and have something to eat, and was not able to do so. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Okay, again, I've got two cards left. If you want to speak, I'm going to cut off any more cards. Okay. Next card I have is Kenny Pang or Pon.
It's not for this case.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I just assumed. My mistake. All right, then, the card that I do have is from Jolene Taylor. Have enough for everyone, I take it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Jolene Taylor. I'm very pleased with staff's appeal presentation. However, I would like to add a couple items. I've visited Ambrosia on three separate occasions this year. On all three occasions, I could not get a table at this restaurant, because they were either setting up for a banquet, or the banquet was in full swing. On one occasion, a Tuesday evening, a staff member asked me, quote, "What I wanted." Not your typical restaurant greeting, but I told them I wanted a menu. I was told I had to go out back, up the stairs to the office to obtain one. I've given all of you a copy of the menu that I received in triplicate that requests, among other things, my name, address, driver's license, and credit card number for a non-refundable deposit. Again, not typical of any restaurant I visited before. That's because, obviously, they do not operate as a restaurant, and I don't believe they ever have. In addition, I have provided you with a copy of an email from the Glendale Police Department that states they were also turned away from dining at Ambrosia. The email states, quote, "One of the males asked us what we wanted. We told them we would like to eat. The male said, 'We are closed, we are a banquet hall.' I am hopeful you will overturn the zoning administrator's land use changes made on an alcohol renewal hearing, and return the conditions of the standing CUP to operate only as a full-service restaurant. In addition, I ask that you also consider the following. Number one, do not approve the CUP renewal for alcohol until an accurate floor plan that is consistent with the CUP to be a full-service restaurant has been submitted and approved by Building and Safety and the Fire Department. It should include permanent seating, not just banquet tables. Number two, do not approve the CUP until a parking plan with adequate parking is submitted, approved, and permitted by Building and Safety. Remember, the required number of parking spaces for a restaurant this size is ninety-five, and per Milk at Toledo, they have thirty-eight. Number three, I'm also pleased with the recommendation to shorten the length of the CUP, but I see in the paperwork, in 1997, the ZA granted Ambrosia a six-month probation hearing to allow time for compliance with all conditions, with another hearing at the end of the six months. I believe the long history of non-compliance, coupled with the attorney for the applicant's statement at the last hearing that Ambrosia was moving away from the restaurant part of the business, warrants a probation period with monthly weekend monitoring by the Glendale Police Department, and never hitting services. Thank you."
Hold on. Any questions for the speaker? All right, thank you. All right, we have, okay, so we have rebuttal time for the applicant. I wanted to make sure I had everybody in the right order here. So that would be your group, sir. Mr. Starboard, I believe you're actually at the end. It's the applicant that gets the time right now.
One thing I want to start with is that I don't live in Glendale. I don't own a business in Glendale, and I don't have any property in Glendale. I'm here as an advocate. I know what that means. Some of the people who spoke in your night don't live within five miles of this facility. They're here as advocates also, though they'd like to pretend it's something else. What's going on here is a little bit different than maybe what you're hearing. What my clients have done is operated a business the same way. You've got the floor plan. Business was set up to offer both private parties and restaurant. Somebody wants now to change, at least some people in this room, and maybe the staff want to change the kind of business that's been operated. It has not changed from the time it went in. It went in the way it is, it is still the way it is. It has not had a complaint, not a parking complaint, not a traffic complaint, not an alcohol complaint, not a police complaint that we're aware of in the last several years. The last complaint with non-compliance was in 1997, eleven years ago, when the building went in, and nineteen, it was started in 1990, I guess, 1994. It had adequate parking pursuant to what the code required at the time. Can't ask for more parking now, because the code has changed. Again, you can't change what the corporate use of the building, because the code has changed in the interim. The code may have changed, the use and the way the business is operated has not. My clients dispute that anybody's turned away during regular business hours. Now, the business isn't necessarily open consistently from six AM to midnight. It opens mostly for lunch and dinner, and has a gap in between, where the business is closed, and it closes down for public consumption sometime, I think, around eight or nine o'clock at night. They don't seat anybody as a restaurant after that. They are open during the regular business hours for meals. They also have private parties, which can be any different matter of times. The testimony is that private parties take up less than half the space in the building. They're always available for people who want to come in. If you come in and you want to have a menu, it may be assumed that what you're coming in for is a party, you'll be sent to go get a buffet menu, or whatever, you know, an event menu, because as Mr. Levick said, the events are currently more profitable than the restaurant operation, and the events are what is keeping, in fact, the business alive. I don't think I have anything else from rebuttal other than that.
Can I ask you a question? Have you seen another menu? This is not a menu, actually. It's a ordering, a catering order.
That's catering order.
Is there a menu?
One of the team.
The business actually does three different things.
Yeah, thank you.
My understanding, my understanding, the business actually has three separate aspects. It has a sit-down aspect, it has a catering aspect, where food is either delivered or picked up to go in large quantities, it's got a large commercial kitchen, and it has, it does a private events where they provide the food at the event for the attendees. And what you've got there is you've got the catering menu, that's one of three. There's a catering menu, there's an event menu, and there's an actual restaurant menu. I think most of their trade is probably lunch and early dinner. They do lunch trade, because that's who comes there. People don't generally go down to San Fernando Boulevard as much to have dinner. It's a, my understanding is mostly a lunch trade. The dinner trade isn't that much in that area, and I don't think there's a lot of dinner restaurants in that area. So what they wind up being is more lunch in the afternoons, and a few nights of private events. events at night, which is what's keeping the business open and keeping it alive.
How do you reconcile the statement that you made that they're closed in the middle of the afternoon with the hours of operations that are posted on the restaurant, where it says they're open from eleven to nine PM pretty much every day?
I think they are. I think what happens is, I'll have my client come back and tell you the exact time they made it close.
I'm sorry, maybe I misheard you, but I thought you said that they closed during the middle of the day.
My understanding is they may be closed from two to four.
In spite of what the hours of operations posted say?
I could be wrong. I'll have my client come in and clarify that for you.
And could you explain, or perhaps your client could explain, why, when it's a beer and wine restaurant, there's an order here for hard drinks on the catering menu?
It has a full liquor license. It doesn't have a bar.
And we just heard testimony that they were serving only beer and wine.
Well, I think what you asked him was two things, whether or not he had a bar, and the answer is no, he doesn't have a bar. He serves at the tables. And you asked him what he served.
Isn't that a little unusual for a restaurant? To not have a bar and just like, you know, give what a, when you come into the restaurant, did he give you a bottle?
No, they serve drinks at the table. They serve pre-made drinks at the table. It is not unusual not to have a bar. If you go to Denny's, you go for alcohol. They don't have a bar. They serve it at the table. And that's what these guys do. They, my understanding is they have a Type forty-seven. Is it a Type forty-seven license?
Staff, you'll confirm that for us?
He's got a Type forty-seven license.
All right. Fair enough. Beer and wine statement confused me on that.
Why? Yeah, he does serve beer and wine, but that's not all he serves. He has a full liquor license.
All right.
And I think that's been in continuous since nineteen ninety-six, right? The liquor license has been in place since ninety-six. Okay. Thank you. One more thing on your rebuttal, I suspect.
Mr. Chair, do you want to answer a question?
We do a restaurant open during the week, eleven to nine, for the private parties, and the restaurant is open at one o'clock Friday and Saturday, and Sunday at twelve o'clock.
So how would you explain when two representatives of the police, I'm sorry, what time did you say the restaurant was open again, during the week?
During the week, eleven to twelve.
Eleven AM to noon, or eleven to midnight?
Eleven PM.
All right.
And during the Friday, Saturday, we are open until one o'clock.
Could you explain why, when two representatives of the police department happened to stop by on Wednesday, January ninth, they were told they're closed, were a banquet hall?
They didn't tell us we were closed. They didn't say we are a banquet hall. They've been, our place, we served dinner, I mean, we gave them a menu. They were two of them. We gave them a menu, they said, I'm going to have a coffee and soft drinks, and they left.
Not according to the email testimony that we received from a representative of the police department. What do you charge for a martini?
We don't serve martinis.
What do you serve for seven, what do you charge for seven seven?
We have, for the hard liquor, for the banquet, private parties, we're serving vodka and scotch for the hard liquor.
But you only set out for the banquet parties? You don't serve hard liquor for the restaurant?
We don't serve for the restaurant. But we do only serving for the private parties. With the restaurant, we're serving the wine and beer.
So when you do the, so beer and wine only for the restaurant?
Yes.
And then you basically put bottles on, bottle service on a table?
No. We do, I mean, the, us for the drinks, we bring on a table.
I'm sorry.
Serving on a table.
You, for a banquet?
Yes.
If somebody orders vodka, for example? How do you serve that, again?
We put the bottle.
Yeah, you put bottles on the table, and they make their own drinks. All right. Thank you for clarifying that for me. Any other questions on hours of operation? All right. Thank you for that. Any further rebuttal comments, sir? All right. Thank you very much. Rebuttal comments from the appellant? And then we may have some questions for staff, I suspect.
Mr. Chair, once again, Jim Starbird, City Manager. On behalf of my office, I think your line of questioning's been a very good one. I have to say honestly that the issues and questions that have arisen here, and frankly, the comments from residents, isn't what initially gave rise to my appeal. My appeal hasn't been about whether or not they are or they aren't operating consistently with their original CUP. I think from my office's standpoint, that remains to be seen, and could be a subject of a subsequent revocation hearing. What gave rise to my appeal, however, is that we shouldn't be condoning that, or allowing that, or somehow facilitating that, if indeed it occur, has occurred, or will occur in the future by somehow expanding the original conditions that were attached to the CUP in two thousand and four. And so my position is, not arguing whether the gentleman in behalf of the restaurant is right or wrong, or frankly, the residents are right or wrong, but with the extension of the CUP for the time period the zoning administrator recommended, the same conditions should apply. And then whether or not they're operating consistent with that remains to be seen, and could be subject of a separate action. And that's my request and recommendation. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Questions for the appellant? All right. Any closing comments from staff?
Yes. Mr. Chair, you asked a couple of questions. First, based on our records, they have a Type forty-seven license, and-
Which includes the ability to serve liquor, I think, sir.
And they also, based on the latest report we have on, from the police department, which is dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight, there does not seem to be any significant level of crime associated, or police calls associated, with this particular business. There is some minor statistics related to the census tract in which they're located, but none of, there's no evidence that anything was associated with the business at all.
Okay.
And also, one more thing that came up during the testimony by the applicant, one of the reasons that we are asking for the latest plans and the drawings of the establishment is that we know that, based on our records, they were approved to have thirty-eight parking spaces. We had counted forty on site, and now we heard forty-one. We would just like to have the correct number on record to make sure that the number of parking spaces we have on record actually reflects what's truly out there and everything else on the floor plan.
But by my understanding is, you would be frankly satisfied with the thirty-eight?
Correct. That's what they're permitted to have.
Questions for, well, yeah, questions for staff?
I have a question. I wanted to clarify something, I believe I heard, regarding the letter from the attorney pertaining to the vested rights. Two thousand and four, this new ordinance was adopted by the city and required the thirty percent rule.
Actually, I'm going to talk, there are two questions about that. One was when the ordinance was adopted, that was prior to two thousand and four. But regarding vested rights, I'd like to refer the question to Mr. Garcia, if I may, to see if anything, it has relevance, it has to the application.
Right. The question of relevance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ramirez. First, with respect to the issue of when the co-change was adopted, I believe it was two thousand and two. But I think, this is just to reiterate the point that Mr. Higani made during his presentation in chief, which was that, at the time that this two thousand and four CUP was approved, it very clearly spelled out the condition that it had to be a full-service restaurant and could not be a banquet hall. And at that time, that condition was not appealed, nor was it challenged in court. And so as a result, the requirement is that the applicant complied with those conditions. And what's, what is stated, and so in other words, there is no vested right to continue a legal non-conforming use, and that's assuming there was legal non-conforming use, because to show that you had a legal non-conforming use, you had to show that the use was lawful at the time, the code was changed, and that you actually engaged in it. I'm not sure if the record before you, that evidence has been presented. There's been assertions that it was, but there, to my knowledge, the actual evidence hasn't been presented. But more importantly, that issue was addressed in the two thousand and four CUP. Clearly, it's required to be a restaurant and could not have banquet hall activities in excess of the thirty percent rule. So any claim of fundamental vested right was waived at the time the two thousand and four permit was approved and was not challenged. And that's our view of it.
So basically, the question of vested rights has to be challenged before it to-
Well, in our view, the conditions sixteen and eighteen, as they were imposed on the two thousand and four CUP, would have had been appealed to the council, and if they were upheld by the council, it would have had been challenged in court. The city's free to basically impose the same conditions, which is all the staff has pointed out as being done here. Condition twenty-five is essentially just very specifically laying out what those requirements are of conditions sixteen and eighteen. In other words, that the thirty percent rule. But the condition that it not be a banquet hall already covers that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Anything else at this moment for staff? Mr. Ramirez?
I have a question for staff. In part of the information, we have, they reference the Glendalmen's Municipal Code thirty twelve oh twenty, which is nineteen ninety-five. That's where the definite, it appears that's where the definition of banquet hall and the C-three zone and so on came into play. Do you have a memory or a knowledge of how the standards might have been in place in ninety-five, prior to the restaurant's opening in ninety-six?
Actually, let me just refer back to what was just, the exchange you just heard. The introduction of the new definition of banquet hall was done in two thousand and two. And prior to that, there was no distinction between banquet hall and restaurant. However, again, the premise of staff's argument is that when two thousand and four, which was after that particular ordinance was adopted, the new conditions were imposed, the new conditions were never challenged, based on any premise, including any premise of extended use of the previous definition of restaurant. So we maintain that argument.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. See, now I'll close the public hearing. We'll enter deliberations. Who would like to weigh in first?
The man in the middle is going to be first. Well, Mr. Chair, the way I see it, there's been a lot of red herring arguments presented tonight, and a lot of discussion about whether or not the establishment is conforming with the terms of their two thousand and four CUP. And to me, this is, that's all very interesting, and I'm very sympathetic to any business that needs to stay open and can only do so by certain manners of conducting business that may or may not be in accordance with the CUP. But I think the real issue right here is that we had a, an application to renew an existing two thousand and four CUP. The application was granted. City manager would like some of the language clarified. The language clarification just points them to the current municipal code. It doesn't really change anything from the two thousand and four. Basically, just says, "Take a look at the current municipal code," which is a prudent thing for anyone to do. So I see no objection at all to granting the appeal of the city manager to clarify the language, so as not to set a precedent in the future. And I feel that if an applicant is disappointed because they don't get something they didn't apply for in the first place, that's basically what you've got to do, what the applicant has to do, is come back and reapply for a variance for the parking spaces, reapply for a variance to turn it into a banquet hall, you know, make that argument and make that separate from the existing CUP. Because right now, it doesn't look like the, doesn't sound like they're adhering to the terms of the original CUP, and they probably need to go clean that up first before applying. So anyway, that's the summary of the way I believe this should go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Torgerson. Mr. Ramirez?
Actually, I'm not sure whether we have to reopen the public hearing. I had a question of the zoning administrator that I forgot to ask.
Well, if we need to formally reopen it, we'll reopen it. Go ahead.
All right. Question for the zoning administrator, since it seems to me that basically it pertains to some of the wording changes in addition to the conditions sixteen and seventeen, primarily the one I'm interested of, the exhibit E. The ones at sixteen, it's that you use the term, well, I'll read the sentence for the public. "That the premise shall remain open to the public during the business hours as a full-service restaurant with incidental private parties." What did you mean by incidental private parties?
Mr. Chair-
Frequency and-
Commissioner Ramirez, if you go back to the history of this property, and I was trying to stay away from that, back in nineteen ninety-six, and this may answer one of your questions also regarding the revocation that happened in nineteen ninety-seven. The establishment had the original conditional use permit as a full-service restaurant, and we know that any full-service restaurants prior to two thousand and two were allowed to have incidental private parties. Incidental meaning it couldn't be the majority of their business, or more than fifty percent. And the main use should remain as a full-service restaurant, and private parties are allowed to be done or to be held in conjunction with the main, the main use, which is the full-service restaurant. Hence, the word incidental, meaning secondary or not the main function or use of the restaurant. In nineteen ninety-seven, I held the revocation hearing for this particular establishment, and at that revocation hearing, the eight conditions that we were trying to clarify is the fact that there were some maintenance issues in their parking lot, there were also some violation of hours of operation from the ABC, and the fact that they may be, or there were alleged violations of having more private parties than a full-service restaurant. So at that revocation hearing, we made it very clear to the property owner, unfortunately, Mr. Levick was not the manager at that time, that they are supposed to remain as a full-service restaurant with incidental private parties. And that's the history of the revocation. And then, I think, the property owner got rid of the manager, and then Mr. Levick came in as the new manager. Since then, this restaurant is one of the very few restaurants that we have not had major complaints or major issues. And Mr. Rene Sada is here from Neighborhood Services. He was present at the last conditional use permit renewal that I conducted, and he attested to the fact that they have no complaints, no code enforcement cases, no nothing on this particular piece of business. The six months for the revocation that I put them on probation is so that we can inspect the place, go in there casually, ask to be served, and I personally had been served. The last renewal, Mr. Sada and I, I asked him to meet me there. We got served lunch. I can tell you that the original floor plan showed in here back in the nineteen ninety-six public hearing is exactly the same floor plan that they used at my last public hearing. So none of the business use has changed, as far as I'm concerned. The type of services that they have offered has not changed. And the reason, and I'm getting to your question, the use of the word solely was so that I could put in line the fact that they are a full-service restaurant that's allowed to have incidental parties and cannot be solely used as a banquet hall. If that word solely brought more ambiguity to it, I have no problems with you removing that word solely. And if there are any doubts that this business has been operating more than just, you know, the incidental private parties, or more of a banquet hall, then I also have no objection to you lessening the number of years that was granted. The only thing that I have done is, for every new cases that we have heard on conditional use permits, we normally would grant three years or five years if there are- If there are some questions, two years. On every renewals, we've made it seven years or 10 years, and we've been pretty consistent with those type of renewal or length of time. And I always ask Neighborhood Services, Code Enforcement, those are-- and Police Department, those are the two departments that I rely heavily when it comes to alcoholic beverage renewal. And when I saw that there was no major issues or concerns, I went ahead and renewed it and then made-- I thought I was making it clear that that cannot be the sole activity that they can have. Because like I said, any restaurants prior to 2002, we'd never distinguished between a full service and banquet hall. They're always allowed to have private parties. And that's the main reason that I tried. I thought I was trying to clarify that.
Well, that's-- you explained very well what some of the questions I had. Thank you. Obviously, some of these terminology I'm used in the field of engineering and science to quantify everything, you know.
Exactly.
10% or not more than once a month. That would have been obviously not in question, but I see what you meant. Unfortunately, incidental means one thing to one person, and of course, it-- but it's obvious from the testimony that I've heard and the information in the report that this is more than incidental. So I think that my-- oh, well, that's the end of the questions that I have for the zoning administrator.
And like I said, we have the code enforcement officer from Neighborhood Services if you want to ask him questions or what.
I was just going to remark that this isn't a revocation hearing. This is a-- this is decided to whether or not to clarify Ms. Fuente's language add in or not. And then additionally, we could talk about there's another bunch of conditions that the staff has recommended we add on to what she said. Now, as far as the incidental versus--
Could I interrupt for just a second? Any other questions for staff?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, not for me. I have none.
We have none. Well, we're reclosing the public hearing.
Back into deliberations.
Please continue.
Yeah, so this-- the language change here doesn't really affect anything in the CUP as far as they're-- what they're doing with it now. It's just-- it just clarifies the language so that future CUP applicants don't get the wrong idea because of a precedent.
Right. I agree with what you're--
It takes out some things that are already defined in the municipal code that are unnecessary to be in the CUP, so that's--
I basically agree with your initial statements about your position. I wanted a clarification as to where the zoning administrator and why some of his language came about, but--
Thank you.
So those are-- that's my position. I agree with Commissioner Torgerson.
Okay. Well, as far as my comments go, I think clearly it was not the intent of the zoning administrator to ease up on any of the conditions that had been previously issued. It was with best intentions, but unfortunately created some cloudiness that the city felt incumbent on improving. So I certainly would vote in favor of the appellant's position. I would make a couple of comments, however, that based on a case we recently heard where we realized afterwards we kind of left it open-ended as far as performance, that I would actually suggest that we modify conditions 26 through 31, and I would suggest that those conditions be met within a period of 60 days.
That goes back to the original comment I said about timeframe deadline and stuff.
And then the only other thing that I would survey your gentleman on is the idea of originally the zoning administrator in her recent hearing had said 10 years. The appellant has suggested two. I'm-- I can work either way on it. I'm sensitive to the idea of two years being a very quick window and a certain burden on the part of the applicant in terms of, you know, coming back. But I'm also concerned over a long-term CUP in terms of what can happen with neighborhoods and redevelopment and parking and congestion, and if there's a change in ownership or a change in management where suddenly they become problem children. A shorter CUP gives us more leverage in terms of not having to go through the long neighborhood services, police action type of process. But that said, I'm thinking maybe, and I only put it out there, whether we want to look at that two years and consider another duration, three years, five years, or go with the two years for--
Well, I think three-- somebody mentioned that three years was common, and that sounds middle of the ground to me, so I would go along with three, too. I think it's too short.
Well, I think three years is appropriate for this.
Okay, so we have--
I think in the ensuing three years, if the restaurant business doesn't pick up and gives them a little breathing room to pursue turning it into a fully-fledged banquet hall and buying up some parking spaces somewhere, doing something-- It's a 220-seat restaurant, and most of the private parties seem to be from 60 to 120, and maybe they cut it down to a 60 or 120 banquet hall, which would require fewer parking places, and it might be more tractable. Anyway, there's just some options that they could be discussing and considering in the next few years.
All right. What do you-- so three years sounds okay.
Three years in the 60-day period of performance for the conditions 26 through 31.
Does that seem like a reasonable duration to you, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments? Any other conditions we may want to consider easing or imposing?
May I ask a question about the 60-day period?
All right.
So is this the intention of the planning commission that if the applicant does not comply within 60 days, then the staff would notice a revocation hearing?
I think that's fair to say.
Understood. Thank you.
That's only for the 25 through 31 conditions.
Okay.
26.
26 through 31.
Right.
And the only possible hardship, I would think, on the applicant is whether or not they can get a floor plan drawn up in 60 days.
We've had testimony that the floor plan's identical.
Oh, then we're done.
Yeah, I felt pretty good about that, given that.
Okay, good.
And before we go to motion, I would just say that offsetting the use pattern, it would be a far more-- let's say, would be far more even onerous to the point of revocation if we were getting a lot of complaints from the neighbors. The fact that at this point in time, they're-- by all appearances, are a clean facility as far as complaints.
And well managed.
And well managed allows me to continue the CUP from, you know, the previous years, whereas opposed to looking at something that would be far more onerous. That said, unless there's further comments, I entertain a motion, please.
I'd move if I could find the motion. Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to conditional use permit case number PCUP 2007-034 located at 6410 San Fernando Road, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, the planning commission hereby modifies the zoning administrator's decision and approves said conditional use case already cited in accord with the findings and conditions listed below. And I won't read all the conditions, but they're in the public records.
Identify the number at least.
Includes 31 conditions with the addition that we change condition number 24 to read three years, and that conditions number 26 through 31 shall be completed within 60 days of the approval of the CUP.
Motion seeking support.
Second.
Motion support. Call roll, please.
Board member-- sorry, Commissioner Torgerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chairman King?
Aye. An affirmative three to zero, the appeal of conditional use permit case number PCUP 2007-034 has been granted. Any individual not satisfied with the commission's decision may file an appeal to the city council. This is done by filing an notice of appeal along with a filing fee at the Building and Safety Section Permanent Services Center located on the first floor of the Municipal Services Building, and appeal must be filed within 15 days. Thank you. We're going to move on to agenda item seven. We'll give maybe the crowd a chance to clear out.
Do you mind two minutes?
Can we just take a recess for five minutes?
Yeah, in fact, yeah. We'll go to recess for five minutes.
Oh, five.
Okay, we're back on. Okay, we're back from recess. This is the June 4, 2008 Planning Commission meeting. We're moving on to agenda item seven, A, Old Business. It's tentative tract map number 69998. This was continued from April 16, 2008. The location is 230 through 240 South Jackson Street. Its APN numbers 5642-009-028, 029, and 030. It's a request to develop a new mixed-use project consisting of three commercial condominium units and 26 residential units on an approximately 26,180 square foot, that's 0.6 acre, site within the East Broadway District of the downtown specific plan zone. The applicant is Jackson Glenn, and staff is represented by Villia Zemetitis. The recommendation is to approve the tentative tract map, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, chapters 16.16 and 16.28 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the conditions prepared in the staff report. Staff overview, please.
Yes, Chairperson Kane, commissioners, again, not to repeat the entire description once more yet. This is a case, and this will be obviously for tentative tract number 69998, located at 230 to 240 South Jackson. It's for a mixed-use project, including the three commercial units and 26 residential units on an approximately 0.6 acre site. The project was approved by the design review board on September 16, 2004, and a revision to the approved plans was approved by the design review board on June 29, 2006. A mitigated negative declaration corresponding to EIF 2004-14 was approved by the design review board on August 19, 2004. A building permit for this particular project has been issued, and the project is currently under construction. And this case was continued from the planning commission hearing date on July 16 in order to allow the applicant additional time to prepare a required noise study. In terms of a brief overview, the northerly half of the project site was previously zoned RMU residential mixed use and was included in the East Broadway zoning standards. And the southerly half, or the southerly triangle, was actually zoned C3. The project was approved in compliance with the RMU and the C3 zoning standards. There was also a mixed-use incentive process that was specific for the residential mixed-use zone, which allowed for greater density, and this would be an increase from 35 units to the acre up to 80 units to the acre with an approved mixed-use incentive by the city council. The project went up to actually 43 units to the acre and was approved as such. The commercial component encompasses 11,470 square feet. This would be in the southerly triangular portion that was previously zoned C3. Again, the project was approved by the design review board at its final date on June 29, 2006, in compliance with the RMU and C3 standards. The site has been rezoned to the downtown specific plan, the East Broadway District, in the-- in 19-- I'm sorry, in 2006. As noted in your staff report, the project still is in compliance with all of the DSP standards, and this would be in regards to density, floor area, height, units, type and size, and parking. I can go into the various details of its compliance with the downtown specific plan design standards if you wish, or I can go ahead and proceed with the staff.
I think you can proceed.
Okay. The site is physically suitable for the proposed type of development, and it's flat. It is appropriate for mixed use. The previous RMU and C3 standards allowed for mixed use, and again, you know, the DSP is consistent with that as well and encourages mixed-use type residential projects. Surrounding uses include a three-story multifamily residential project to the north, a seven-story commercial project to the west across Jackson. There is an alleyway that borders the westerly property line, and across from that alleyway along Glendale Avenue, you have one-story commercial, and then also one-story commercial just to the south on Colorado. Those one-story commercial type businesses and structures have the ability to hopefully be redeveloped one day.
I'm thinking those are highlights.
In terms of the general plan, there is consistency with all of the various land use elements, including the noise ordinance. There was some discussion regarding the fact that the northerly half of the project site is actually located within the CNEL level of 65 to 70, which is a somewhat questionable range for multifamily residential development. A noise study was prepared by-- prepared by Veneklausen Associates dated April 24, 2008, and we've certified that the noise levels do not go above 65 CNEL. So it is appropriate for multifamily residential development, although it's located within a noise contour level that shows that it's above. Other than that, staff has prepared 33 conditions of approval. The conditions of approval deal obviously with improvements to the right-of-way, various public works type-related issues. There are planning conditions of approval as well as Glendale Water and Power. This tentative tract map would be good for a period of three years. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Mr. Torgerson.
This report of geotechnical investigation?
Yes.
Yeah. It looks like a form of information act from the CIA where there's--
Yes, unfortunately, the highlighted portions, and I apologize, the highlighted portions did not come out through the copying machine, so--
Do you have a copy? I could glance at it real quick.
Yes.
I saw the same thing. I did call Karen Muniz, and he did not-- he was out of the office, but there's nothing that I could tell that is really significant in terms of what I was interested in, that is the shoring, temporary shoring, and that's all included on page seven.
Oh, Karen Muniz did this.
Yeah.
Yes, I know that there was quite a bit of discussion at the designer view board stage regarding the two levels of subterranean garages, two levels of parking. And this was reviewed by the city engineer. They have obtained their shoring, so it has been reviewed and approved by our city engineer. So in terms of--
It's in construction.
It is in construction, correct.
Okay. I personally believe this was a test on staff's part to see if we actually--
You actually read it?
--if we're ready to bring it. So congratulations, we've all passed.
Mr. Ramirez and the city engineer's happy, and I don't need to say anything. Well, it's in construction, and the seven is already in place.
I have one speaker card. It's Kenny Pang. Now would be the time for you to speak if you'd like.
If you'd like.
If you'd like. Well, come on up, because I have a question for you.
Good evening, commissioners and chairperson. My name is Kenny Pang, the applicant for this project on Jackson Street. First of all, I'd like to thank all the city staff for getting this project along. Currently, the project is, you know, under construction, and we are satisfied with all the conditions stated on this report. If you have any other questions or concerns, please let me know. My project manager and his staff will be happy to answer them.
I guess the only question I had is, um, have you started pre-selling units and how's the market for you?
Uh, well, um, we do have a little bit of a doubt in the back of our minds, but, um, we, uh, you know, dueling a lot of, um, advertising, uh, pre-planning even before this subdivision and, um, you know, I, I cannot really give you a, a firm, um, you know, answer, but, uh, we, we look forward to, um, you know, selling this project and, um, we will, we will, uh, you know, come through.
Because, you know, as a condominium developer, to have you up here smiling right now is kind of a treat. It's a, it's a tough market, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, yeah. We'll do our best to, uh, get through it.
Good luck. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the...
Well, I, I know that you were, uh, that the site is within the DSP, the Downtown Specific Plan area, and of course, uh, no, no allowable, I mean, no consideration for affordable housing is included in the plan, but do you propose to have any?
Um, as far as the approved plan, we do have, I believe, three units, uh, allocated for, uh, senior housing.
Good.
So, um, we, we do have, you know, that in the plan.
I'm very appreciative of that.
Yes.
And depending how bad the market is, it might get to become very affordable.
I might have to move in.
We'd love to have you in our project.
Yes, and forgive me for not mentioning it earlier. One of the stipulations for the approval of the mixed-use incentive by City Council is the fact that the three additional units would be for senior housing.
Great.
So, they will have a senior housing component.
Citywide policy or...
No, this, no, again, this was solely for the residential mixed-use zone with the RMU, which unfortunately is no lo, well, unfortunately or fortunately is no longer in our zoning code, and the residential mixed-use zone allowed for increased density provided with an approved mixed-use incentive process by City Council. In this case, it was approved with three additional units for senior housing. So, it still stands.
That would've been great to have it in DSP.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
There is actually, um, just, just to mention that there is the ability to, um, in the Downtown Specific Plan, one of the incentives is senior housing.
Yes.
So, you do have the ability to go up not only in the number of stories, but in the floor area ratio if a project includes senior housing. So, yes, it has been appropriate.
No one has done it.
No one has done it, no.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, any other comments from staff?
None.
Seeing none. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Yeah, if there are none, please, uh, would someone, um, present a motion?
I lost it again.
I'm just here to give your motion.
I got too tidy and I cleaned up and I lost the motion again.
It needs to be an engineered work.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that upon consideration of tentative tract number 69998, and after reviewing the records filed, reports and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 69998 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, chapters 16.16 and 16.28 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 33 additional conditions listed below, and that the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings a fact, and I won't read the findings of fact or the conditions because they're on the public record.
There you go. Oh, second up?
Motion support. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Torgerson?
Aye.
Chairperson Kane?
Aye. On a vote of three to zero, tentative tract 69998 has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, New Business. There is none. Agenda Item 9, Planning Department Updates.
That's it.
It is a sad but great day.
And we would like to thank Mr. Ramirez, um, for his six years of service to the Planning Commission. Been a great commissioner. I know you're always prepared, you show up regularly. We really appreciate all the good advice and the assistance you've given us over the years. I mean, we also have, uh, some remarks from Mr. Hagani.
I just would like to add that, um, I actually have had the pleasure of having joined the Planning Department over the past, uh, almost six years as well, so I have been one of the beneficiaries personally of, uh, Mr. Ramirez's contributions, especially during the first five years that I was, uh, in charge of bringing all of the policy changes that we brought in, and, uh, it has, it was always wonderful to know that we, we will be given, that we will be able to put in the, into context, uh, the way that we want all the new policy recommendations and knowing that, um, we could rely on Mr. Ramirez to actually bring in, in the right questions if for any reason we were, uh, not bringing the, the main points into the question. We really appreciate it, and we'll miss you greatly.
Thank you for those words.
And may I, if I may add, um...
Thank you.
I guess I've always been impressed with, uh, Richard's commitment to affordable housing, who is something, a topic which he's always pushed here. And in addition, I want to recognize him for his work on, uh, our zoning code advisory group, which he's done, uh, which he did, you know, obviously without compensation for a number of years here, and we hope to continue to take advantage of his, you know, experience and wisdom in that capacity.
All right. Well, I have the sad pleasure, and it's a sad pleasure because we will miss you, Mr. Ramirez. You're, you're just been a tremendous asset. Your knowledge, your introspection, your comments, um, have just been invaluable. And it's a sad fact that with, you know, commission term limits, we're going to lose you, and, uh, but it's also, I'm sure, a relief to you to find a few extra hours in your month.
Absolutely.
That said, um, it gives me great pleasure to read a resolution from the Planning Commission. It's whereas Richard M. Ramirez completed six years of service to the City of Glendale as a member of the Planning Commission from 2002 until 2008, and whereas his unselfish contribution of his personal time, energy, knowledge and expertise as an architect, actually engineer...
Architect.
Ah, ah, as an engineer...
It's my granddaughter.
Has contributed, uh, pretending, not even pretending to be an architect. Let me get through this. As an engineer has contributed to upholding the objections of the ordinances of the city, and whereas the commission has high regard for the ability of Mr. Ramirez to analyze the various issues which have come before the Planning Commission during his period of service, and whereas Mr. Ramirez has demonstrated strong and continuing interest in solving the many varied problems before the commission for the purpose of improving the welfare of the citizens and the protection of their property rights, and now therefore be it resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale that the commission extend to Mr. Ramirez sincere appreciation for the years of service so graciously given with today's date. And, uh, there were a couple of our Commissioners absent. We'll get their names. Um, I suspect we may want to change one word on this. We'll get this out.
Actually, I can change it right now.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, we can make conditions, can't we, on this?
Actually, I move to approve that with a condition.
In any event, take a look at it. It'll look even better when it's framed and fully signed.
Actually, I, I would like the word volunteer because, uh, I mean, uh, everybody, a lot of people know that I'm actually an engineering geologist by, by profession, but, uh, I like to consider myself a volunteer to this community and devoted many, many hours, uh, through many organizations, and I really, uh, am proud to have served six years at the commission, serving to our city and, and working with some devoted people here at the Planning Department. I think, uh, the, the staff at the Planning Department are outstanding. I've dealt a lot of, with a lot of people, not only in my employment as, as a CEO of a company, but, but throughout other departments in, in the county of Los Angeles and, uh, in the state, at the state level, and I, I think that the Planning Department people and my colleagues are all on the high level, I tell you. I'm very proud to, to have known you and worked with all of you. I appreciate, uh, this and, and of course, the recognition and all the good words. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
You might want to change that to engineering geologist or volunteer.
Be happy to do that, Mr. Ramirez.
Okay.
City volunteer.
And...
City volunteer. Get it re-signed next, uh, two weeks from now.
Yeah, exactly. And, um, but you'll still get the frame back.
Of course.
And, um, unless there's other comments from Commissioners, um, I understand that there's, uh, some refreshments, um, to commemorate your leaving. We'll invite everyone in the audience to join us, and unless there's any objection, uh, I, yes?
I just made one real quick comment.
Please.
That I know on behalf of the two missing planning Commissioners and myself, we're going to miss you, Richard.
Well, I'm going to miss, uh, you know, working with all of you and, uh, like I said, the staff is, as well.
All right. Very good. All right.
You'll see me on the other side, though, Toby.
Well, we'll give you three minutes. Um, if there's nothing else, um, I'll say we're adjourned.
Okay.
We are adjourned.